All right, just want to greet you all for this, this is a special board meeting. We're at our meeting today is in three parts, special board meeting, we're going to do a couple, a little bit of quick voting on staffing. The next is our work session and then after that we'll be going into closed session. So I'm just, just so the room kind of understands the gist of how tonight's going to go. We're going to start with roll call, Kinsey.
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present. We're going to go into, we have two action items, first is employment of staff, would someone like to read the motion? Go ahead, Brian.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Kinsey? Online voting is now open.
Kinsey, I vote yes, I'm having issues connecting right now.
All votes been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you, next is resignation of staff, would someone please read the motion?
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion and questions. Kinsey?
I vote yes.
Online voting is now open.
I still vote yes.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you, that completes the agenda for our special board meeting, with that I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second, okay, all in favor? I oppose, we're adjourned, we're going to go immediately into our work session. Everyone, I need to. Okay. Um, all right, so I'm going to welcome you to this part of our meeting for tonight. This is our monthly work session and we are going to take the role again, Kinsey? Gerlach.
Yeah.
Mills.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
All right, all board members are present and the next thing on our agenda is the open forum. I have two people that have signed up to speak, they're both virtual, I believe. And the first one is Leo Weekly. Dash, just let me know if she, when she's on. Leah, can you hear us? Leah, are you muted?
You've been muted phone call from the phone call side.
Hello, Leah, are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you hear me, all right?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, um, please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes, thank you.
Leo Weekly, 3467 Yorkshire Road, Green Bay. Unfortunately, I'm unable to be present tonight in person as I've been spending some much needed time with my kids up north before the uncertainties of the upcoming year at WICUAC unfolds. Cutting short, our vacation would mean taking away more memories from my children and I just can't do it. The countless hours I have missed with my kids while advocating for their school and community weigh heavily on my heart. Although I cannot be physically present, please know that my spirit stands with every parent and community member who has come to support our children or who is listening on this session today. Over the past few months, I have conveyed to the board the significance of WICUAC to our community, shared ways to reduce costs through partnerships with organizations, discuss the potential impact of future east side growth on the area, and outline strategies to increase enrollment and establish WICUAC as a distinguished environmental school within our community. Equally important, I have emphasized why the decision to close our school for the sake of minimal savings will disrupt and displace numerous families within the district. You may have heard of the butterfly effect, where seemingly minor actions can lead to significant outcomes. I feel this will be the case for the future of our kids, the environmental program, and the district, and not necessarily for the better if this process is rushed. I remain convinced that choosing to close WICUAC is an unfavorable decision for the district's future. However, regardless of the choice made, I ask that the board to carefully consider the consequences and resolutions, no matter how small they may appear. While advocating for the preservation of WICUAC due to its small class sizes and excellent learning environment, I have also have the responsibility to make sure that this program and the values of WICUAC stay alive for future generations of students. As the incoming vice president of the WICUAC PTO, I have redirected much of my efforts towards helping to understand the integration of the program at Red Smith and create positivity moving forward. My hope is that regardless of the decision, this program will be studied and understood to its entirety because it is such an important aspect of the advancement of environmental science and hands-on learning in the district. Furthermore, I am committed to advocating for the well-being of other families and children across the district during the remainder of this facility's plan. Two weeks ago, for the first time throughout this process, I felt that my concerns were truly acknowledged through Mrs. Byer and I appreciate that. She was kind and willing to hear my thoughts. Although I did not anticipate this would influence the decision to close, I genuinely sensed that my voice was heard regarding the challenges of this process and the importance of addressing the needs of parents to move forward confidently. This is the kind of engagement we have consistently sought throughout this process. I recommend the other board members follow in her lead. I would not wish this process upon my worst enemy. The manner in which this situation was handled has taken a toll on all of us. I understand there are decisions to be made, but they need to be fair, studied, and formulated based on calculated data, not estimates or guesswork. The process for WICUAC has lacked many important things. As we progress through the facilities plan, I have some thoughts on how to collaborate with families and future decisions to mitigate the emotional distress and mental anguish that our families experience. This process has been painful and it didn't have to be this way. The district must treat children and families as more than statistics. It's crucial to listen to their insights, engage with their feedback, and provide timely responses. Even if the response is not what they are hoping for, transparency will be greatly appreciated. It's also crucial to be properly prepared when meeting with families. We as parents do not wish to see decision makers fumbling for numbers and explanations on matters affecting our children. The district's preparedness and consideration will make an enormous difference. My final thoughts and latest frustration with this process is that my four-year-old daughter may never get to experience WICUAC. There was hardly a day that would go by where she wasn't asking me about when she could go to her brother's school. She was excited to start learning and it was because of WICUAC. This speaks volumes about the school. She was able to experience the events and festivals, interact with the amazing drop-off staff each morning, and hear the wonderful things my son was learning in class with teachers who made it fun. She was enrolled in 4K at WICUAC for this coming year, but due to the disorganized facilities process, parents un-enrolled their kids and took them elsewhere, causing the class size to drop to three. I don't blame them as the uncertainty is scary. It's days before school starts and we still aren't sure where she's able to attend. I understand that a class of this size is an ideal for interaction, but it's too late to enroll her in many of the programs who had similar learning styles to that of WICUAC. It makes me sick that I have to be the one to break her heart telling her she can't attend the school that she has come to know and love, and then to do it all over again for my son should the board vote to close WICUAC. This school has become our community. Our children are enduring the repercussions of this chaotic procedure, and I am convinced that these difficulties could have been prevented with more careful consideration and planning. I know big decisions need to be made, but I'm asking that the district please think about all of our kids during this process as they move forward in the facilities plan.
Thank you, Leah. Um, next is Jessica Medina.
Next is Jessica Medina.
Hello, Jessica?
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Please state your name and your address and you have five minutes.
Jessica Medina, 3891 Scottman Circle. At the last board meeting, Ms. McCoy stressed how she wanted everything to be fair and that it was her biggest concern was being fair. But I think I can speak for almost if not all WICUAC community that this whole experience has been completely unfair for all of us. We were not allowed a community input survey or a task force of our own to look at boundaries. All we got was a task force that took a lot, a look at the building and determined that the school needs a new broiler itself. And since it's on Septic, there was no way to expand the building, which is untrue according to the town of Scott Sherman. That was it, who cares about the 116 students that attend this school already? No research was done about the education or activities that go on inside the school. Us parents did the research, us parents researched environmental schools, the impact it has on our students. Us parents found out that there are waiting lists all over the state of Wisconsin to get into schools like WICUAC. Us parents filed open records requests to determine the operational cost of WICUAC. Us parents learned that the number that the district threw out, the approximate number they gave us, is not the correct one. Us parents have been fighting tooth and nail for someone on the board to actually listen to all of the facts. Us parents know what the impact will be if you close this high-performing school. Us parents know that the environmental program will never work at the overcrowded Red Smith School. The district has failed this school by not promoting it better, and they continue to fail it by even thinking of closing it. I have no faith in this district anymore. Parents or people left this district because of the COVID rules. Of course, enrollment is going to be down. I heard they might not run the 4K program because of only having five students in it. What did you think was going to happen if you, if, when you throw out the fact they might close WICUAC down? You need to run this 4K program and actually give these kids a chance to experience the wonderful opportunities provided at WICUAC. It's the least that you could do for the school. Each and every one of you sitting up there has failed our students and the wonderful staff at WICUAC Elementary by potentially closing the second-ranked school in the district. What if this was your children, your grandchildren going through this? Would you want your children crammed into a different school just because the district can't manage their money? I'm going to do everything in my power to remove each and every one of you from your elected position. Might not happen as soon as we like, but it will happen. You guys are elected to do what is best interest of these students and you have failed miserably. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. That's all I have for open forum tonight. Did you have something you wanted to say? Yes, but you have to fill out the form that's outside the door. Is there anyone else in the audience who is hoping to speak at the open forum tonight? If so, please fill out the form and hand it to Kinsey over here. We'll just take a very brief moment here. Why don't you go ahead and come up to the podium? Be here? Yes, um, yes, you have, so state your name, your full name and your address, and then you have five minutes.
Thank you, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sandy Johnson, a retired Green Bay teacher. My husband is here also, he's a retired Cocona High School teacher, taught there for 31 years. I have a statement that I'll give each of you with an attached estimate of solar panels. The title of this is Promises Kept. As elected members of the Green Bay Public School Board, you essentially made a promise to all residents to create a safe learning environment that would give the students a sense of community and a chance to become lifelong learners and successful responsible citizens. Increasing class sizes, especially for the primary grade students slated to be bused to the middle schools, lessens the odds that they can overcome the loss of two years of in-person classroom learning during the COVID global pandemic. Kids tend to act out in larger class sizes. Those that have stress-related issues or mental problems, and a new study shows that 50% of kids today do, tend to disrupt classes, making teaching more challenging for the teachers and staff and less safe for the other students. Less space in the classroom often leads to fewer hands-on activities to achieve the state standards. Rather than close potentially 11 Green Bay schools, there are practical, creative ways to cut overhead costs and actually expand services to, in these neighborhood schools, the key is neighborhood schools. Number one, seriously explore transitioning both WICUAC and Beaumont Elementary Schools into environmental science curriculum-based schools. Both of these single-story buildings sit on acres of land, allowing for on-ground photovoltaic solar panel projects. Beaumont can be an example of an urban school project while WICUAC school exemplifies a rural project. Work with Colton Springer, the Green Bay rep for Focus on Energy, who already works with this school district to reduce energy costs in the district's buildings. See the printout of the recent estimated worksheet for both these schools by Faith Technologies who designed and installed photovoltaic panels for the Gordon Bubels Nature Center in Appleton. Michael Voigt, V O I G T, provided this information and can be reached, and I have the phone number here, I spoke to him over the phone recently. Beaumont, for example, could be renamed the Beaumont Academy of Arts and Sciences to indicate that the curriculum is multifaceted to include language arts, performing arts, as well as aesthetic arts like drawing and painting. WICUAC already is a step ahead with their infusion of science into all other areas and work, hand in hand with the staff at UW-Green Bay, a very creative curriculum. Number two, sell the cup of joy building. The Green Bay District made the decision, for whatever reason, to purchase that building to prevent, and this is possibly just a rumor, to prevent a tavern from being built nearby. Several iBuyWI.com companies advertise the fact that they're eager to purchase such public buildings. Real estate in this area seems to be in demand. Use that money made toward repairing a Green Bay school. Number two, again, explore with Focus on Energy to see if heat pumps could be purchased and installed to reduce the heating and cooling costs of each building. Number four, create before and after, I'll tell you why I'm going to say this. I had a dental appointment and the young lady that was helping me said, I live in the WICUAC area, the district. She said, I needed an after, before-school and after-school program for my young children. She could go to a parochial school nearby in the next district for $8 a student per day. So, create before and after-school activities at several of these Green Bay elementary schools to provide tutors at a reasonable cost to the families in language arts, math, and science by working with UW-Green Bay education majors, for example, to earn their degree, community hours by overseeing and designing these after-school learning activities to be held, say, from 2:30 to 3:30 each day. The schools are still open with the office, maintenance, and teaching staff still in the buildings until contract time. When I taught science to among and his, among refugees and Hispanic immigrant students, overnight, my math class went from 15 among students to 15 Hispanic students, 30 students in all. And I called, they, they wouldn't provide a translator for my class. I called UWGB, they had education majors, they came in and translated for me at no charge. Um, one last thing.
One last thing.
Dr. Tiller has previous experience as the assistant superintendent in the Detroit Public School District. Use those experiences in a large urban district and develop ideas that he has to design a school with ways to reach those students who feel that the Green Bay schools hold nothing for them and that in their mode of thinking, the current curriculum is not relevant to them. Such improvements in the district can reduce behavior problems and increase their test scores to advance to higher learning. More families could be drawn to these schools to help their students succeed, and one last thing, Dr. Tiller, you promised at the last WICUAC meeting that you would provide a parent information session at every school that's being proposed to close. You were asked, are you open to that? You said, oh, yes, indeed. We hope that you keep your promise, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. We're going to move on in our agenda then. Also, I neglected to mention that tonight is the first meeting for our new associate superintendent of students and learning, David Johns, right over there. Welcome aboard. All right, next on the agenda is facilities, master planning, and referendum updates. Under A is Yep, facilities, master planning, and referendum updates is going to be put on there. Okay. All right. Um, Dr. Tiller will be reporting on that in his superintendent update. Go ahead, Andrew.
So, since, since we're posted for it now, and I don't know if it'll fit in correctly, but in the spirit of having this be a permanent agenda item for discussion, there's something I've been thinking about that won't, it won't be answered tonight, but I just want to make sure that it's not, it's not lost on the, the discussion process as we're looking about schools, what to do with the, what to do with schools that are very, very under capacity, what to do with schools that are somewhat under capacity. And it's my hope that we can consider, unless I'm the only one who feels this way, but there is, I think there is some value to there being a neighborhood school and there is some value to a more compact situation where fewer kids have to be bused. That's not infinity, the value of that is not infinity and spend whatever it takes to run, run buildings, no matter how, how low they are, that is not it. I don't think the value is zero either. And I just want to make sure that we're talking about that in conjunction with the important discussion about, about dollars and cents. And I'm sure, well, I'll have our own line to place there, but it's, I wanted to mention it here because I don't, I haven't heard enough about this, it's more just been about the, the money or the particular program, so there is some non-infinite, non-zero value to this, I believe.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
I've always said when we, when we're talking about the, this project that we're working on as a school district, this is our opportunity, once in a generation, to make some significant changes. And I think it ties into what Andrew's also talking about when we look at these referendum, I'm sorry, the, the master plan updates with it of looking at the bigger picture as well, tied in with what Andrew's saying, but this is the opportunity to look at start times, this is the opportunity to look at busing, this is the opportunity to really fix a lot of the issues that have been brought up to this board and previous board members or boards as well on it, so I, I hope that that kind of melds with what Andrew is talking about as well on this and, and that we just keep that in mind as well when we're looking at all of these programs and all these changes that we need to do because of the shortage of funding from the state, so.
Thank you. Andrew?
There, there also is, there also is some non, some value that's not zero and not infinity of new facilities too. So, yes, there is, I just want to make sure that all the variables are on the table, I think, between, between Brian and I, we probably caught, caught most of them, they're, the, the intangibles are the part that have to be, have to be considered along with the money.
James?
Um, I hear you and I appreciate your position. On what I think the district requires is that we translate these concepts, concepts, these ideas and this direction into directing the district, right? So, right now, we have four resolutions that have created action and there are people spending time going down a path. But I don't see is any direction that we have provided to date for them to consider or an action plan to move as to name or create that plan and turn your thoughts into a, a decision matrix or some sort of criteria that we would judge something against, so I hear the desire. I don't know that we have directed the district on any action to, to kind of, you know, enact what you're wanting to be done, and I, I fear that if we leave it here, we will talk to it, talk to it, talk to it, and then the plan will be executed and it will be insensitive to your position because we didn't tell them to do something tangible. And so, I would encourage anyone that wants that to, to take that action of codifying it into a motion, codifying it into direction so that they can actually do something about it, because I, I appreciate your, your position.
Brian?
I think this is kind of one of the things that we run into with making sure that we're doing this in front of everyone, which we obviously need to do, making sure that we're talking about items that are within the agenda and those plans, but also making sure that those are forward. So if there's a way that we can, if it comes down to a emotion of incorporating somehow or studying the delayed start, you know, our, our bell schedule that we looked at earlier, and if it ties into our green energy plan that we've spoken of before, I'm not sure the logistics of that, but I would hope that that would be on the forefront of our plans moving forward and that there would be wiggle room in there when we're looking at these items, so it, it's something that we've been trying to address for the, the last year to no one's fault, but to make sure that those opportunities are still on there. So, James, I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to ask, or, you know, how, how would you recommend that we go about doing that?
So, practically, we can start tonight because we have a charter that will direct, you know, the roles and responsibilities of the committee members that are going in collaboration with or assist our, our external party in, you know, creating the district or the boundaries, right? And we, we have the opportunity, because I know that they will have transportation involved, I know that they'll have other resources and assets of the district as part of that, so if we want to or direct as part of that charter, some of that action, we can't, it's, I don't know if it's the right place, but we're starting now. But we're starting now. I, in my perspective, I think the board last year took a vote to table start times, and there is a large amount of work that informed the the recommendations. And I think it is not in our best interest just to tack it on, right? Because it was big and it had all kinds of stuff. So I think maybe we we have to bring that back up.
I think that what you're asking for is more than reasonable. And I I feel like there's some steps that have to happen before we can do that. So passing a referendum, what is our district going to look like? Then then because that, of course, will affect start times radically. So I I think we definitely should give those consideration. But we're 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 some steps away from that right now. That's all. Go ahead, Brian.
I completely respect what you're saying with that, and I'm genuine when I'm saying which which comes first because we're we're chasing our tail, but we also can't chase our tail for another year with it. And I think that as elected board members, we need to be able to state these are our priorities. When we looked at the original building, right, the the facilities study, we purposely removed ourselves from it to not, I don't know how to say poison the well, but to to allow the committee to do their work. At some point, we as board members need to come up and say, these are our priorities because we all ran on different priorities, and we need to make sure that the people that elected us recognize the fact that these are still our priorities, and whether it comes in, whether it's a it's a statement from the board, and we look at individual ideas and we we vote them up or down, or we come up with a working document that isn't necessarily a charter or anything else with it. I think we need to not have this dying committee. I think we need to make sure that it is recognized by the public that we're hearing their concerns. These are our ideas as elected members and finding the vehicle for that. And whether it's just a simple document that says these are our priorities, or if it if it goes up and down for yes, no vote on it, we need, we need to now put I don't want to say take ownership for it, but we need to make sure as elected officials that we have our input on it as well. So.
So start times and what was the other thing you mentioned, Brian?
I think start times are something that definitely should be brought back in with it. I think looking at our programming options and making sure that we have taken a vested interest in in since that we support the program and that's out there. I think looking at I I think there's a lot of different parts of it, and even if it comes down to something similar that we do with policy where we we have a cycle of it, we take three or four key items and say, these are things we're looking at. Do we support them? And and provide that opportunity. I'm not saying the next meeting, but maybe through the fall, we say this meeting, we're looking at such and such items and come up with an outline for that. And go from there and see where it's at. I think we just need to start moving on what the board supports.
Okay, thank you, James.
I appreciate the clarification. I think you're talking about as a board, we we have the these priorities. You weren't trying to suggest that start times be a part of our subordinate to the facilities master plan. You just want to make sure that as we go, we kind of walk and chew gum at the same time and do multiple things. I understand. So back on the the, unless you have something on this, I'd like to ask if we can have Josh come up or something to represent on the facility master plan. This in the spirit of moving things along, right, tonight, we have a agenda item for specific to the advisory committee and specific to information about the WIC resolution. And I just have a question because it's not covered, but it's associated with these things. So we've heard all through the last several months from parents and others that are interested in the situation at Leonardo da Vinci. And as we get closer and closer to deadlines for decisions, I just wanted to make sure that that if the district had any more information that would inform a decision by the board on Leonardo or is what we have, what we have so that we can take on the the topics of whether or not we want to bring this to a vote or if we want to push off until November and handle it all. It was, I think that's a legitimate conversation because, you know, we heard from the WIC rock parents that one of the stressors is the unknown, right, and not knowing what's going to happen. And if we have the information, I would encourage the board to engage in discussion and move it to vote. And I think that's what everyone deserves at this point. So is there any information out there that would continue to inform the board?
No, I don't believe so. I believe you have the rationale from the task force of why it was recommended to close. And there isn't any more information we could provide it not being not having an attendance boundary. It's unaffected by that work that is also going to be beginning here shortly. So I I do not think that we as administration have any additional information to provide.
Appreciate it. That's all I wanted to ask because I know that we've we haven't, we've heard a lot, and we haven't ever just stepped up and and addressed it and and communicated what the next steps would be. And I think we need to be all about next steps. Here, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
When we're looking at this, once again, goes into kind of the dog chasing its tail part of it. If we are looking at a K eight possibility with the study of the site at Webster, you know, this is this is another one of the moving pieces. So once again, having our priorities and the studies set is going to push everything on it. So.
Go ahead.
I agree. And as far as having a discussion about that, ultimately, you know, one could look at this and say it's kind of agnostic as to what happens at Webster. Given if we have a discussion about the financial case for doing it versus the other attributes of the guidance from the the task force and whether or not we feel like we can run that up against our guidance around how we would evaluate the plan. And if there's enough information that the board feels comfortable going ahead and putting it to the vote. I I think that's legitimate, but if you as a board member say, no, I need to know what happens at Webster because my it would vote, it would change my vote whether or not Webster's empty or not, right? I think that's where you're getting to. So we can do that. I just want to make sure that we actually talk about it and have that discussion and kind of start taking each other's temperature as far as, you know, if we feel ready to move this to action or if it needs more time. Because if we subordinate to the 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 boundaries, even though there's no boundary issue, right, if we subordinate to that resolution, we're probably talking about almost next year, you know, like next year, second quarter, before we get the information you you might be searching for. So.
Okay, so are we comfortable with at least putting that on the radar as something that we might talk about again, very like at the next meeting? Um, Brian.
I'm fine with the discussion, but to have a vote without having other information would be difficult, you know, and and I I want to make sure that we're not. Once again, it goes into the the moving pieces and making sure open forum and everything else with that. I would want to know the information of possibility of the Webster site before I would vote on anything for Da Vinci if it was to move because of the two. And if I don't have the information for the possibility of use of the Webster site for other things, then I would feel we aren't doing it with fidelity for our other ones with Da Vinci. It's counterproductive to the argument I've said for the last year, we do need to make decisions, but we also all of the pieces, especially on those two parts are are going to be a key part of it. So I don't know if I actually had said anything on that, but.
Andrew.
That's a that's a fair point. It's it certainly becomes, and I've I've said, you know, fairly fairly consistently and publicly that we have for Da Vinci to to stay doesn't cost money. Money was invested there. There is no, no, no desire, no real, no push to to leave. There are some people who see the advantages of of Webster. There would almost certainly, I think, be more greatly dissatisfied people if it moved than if it didn't move, although certainly there are people who would probably be okay with with both. I have other. I think I think something needs to be in Webster, which makes it even easier for me to say that about about Da Vinci. It's and we have that we have the integrated arts program there. It is not one of our it is not one of our most underpopulated schools, and I think there's some again, it's that it's that trade off where you know, in the in the end, in the end, how much how much consolidation do do we do? So it's it's easier for me to say right off the bat that I I don't see any sense in moving Da Vinci because the where it would move to, I think, should be its own thing, whether that's as it is, whether that's targeted for expansion as a K eight on that side, et cetera. So obviously, if others have a different opinion about about what happens at Webster, then it would be perhaps harder to you know, but that that's where I'm at.
Okay, James.
So the bottom line, I guess what I'm seeking as discussion is whether or not, whether the general of the opinion of the board, whether or not the decision that Da Vinci makes sense and is attached to the decision or webs of Webster or not, right? If you look at the the proposal and you look at the financial case and the guidance and what we're trying to accomplish through the facilities master plan, and you say, or six of us say there there really is not a strong connection between those two decisions. I would hate to wait a year to take that vote. If we had the discussion and everyone says, no, I want that information because I do believe that if Webster is vacant, the move is the legitimate thing to do, then absolutely, let's wait and determine the 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 outcome of the Webster and the K eight stuff. But, you know, when you're dealing with a population of parents and you say you're going to be in limbo for one year, and at the end of that year, the the decision could have been taken earlier, I think that's kind of unfair. That's that's the only thing I wanted to.
I think it's probably, just speaking for myself now, better to make to to not focus on expediency as much as making the right decision for our district in the long term. The populations of schools come and go, but what we're doing here is long term planning for an entire district. So I'm I guess right now I'm leaning toward delaying that, delaying that. That's I'm only speaking for myself. You all can speak for yourself. So go ahead, Laura.
Thanks. Through all that discussion, what I heard in a nutshell was, do we want to move the decision about Da Vinci up sooner than later? I am, I would be okay with that. I'm I, in general, feel comfortable with Da Vinci remaining where it is, considering all the other things that we have to look at and all of the other pressing concerns and also with Andrew and shared about cost. I am, I am okay with looking at that sooner than later, so we can focus our energies on other areas.
Anybody else want to speak up? Go ahead, Lynn.
I agree, and of course, I'm the least experienced person here, but I've toured Da Vinci, I've toured Webster, I've learned about their programs. I just want to see that fine arts program alive and well at Webster. I, there's facilities that were built for that program, and I think Da Vinci is doing just fine where it is. I would like to take Da Vinci off the off the proposal, leave them alone, and make good, good use of Webster School.
Go ahead.
I agree with that.
Okay. I feel like everyone's had a chance to, okay, we have a couple of weeks to kind of think about that if we want to. Let's let's take that time and 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 maybe readdress this in a couple of weeks to see if we want to move that forward for a vote. Okay, let's move on in the agenda. The next is advisory committee charter. Did you want to report out on that, James?
Sure. So I shared a document via email with all the board members and Kenzie. Just at the beginning of the meetings. Again, because of opening laws, we couldn't collaborate on the document. So tonight is a first read of a draft where everyone gets to read it. There's a lot of information that needs to be filled in. A lot of decisions, and I want to focus the conversation tonight on whether or not we have the scope and the responsibilities. And maybe the membership criteria of the committee kind of if we're can get consensus around that. Oh, I I think that would be a good start. So given I thought I had sent it to you already. Did I not?
Have it. Do you have it?
Oh, this is one that you Yes, a second. Yep.
I'm sorry, I don't.
I shared it with you before, just for formatting.
Oh, okay.
Point of information on this, could you, since it's a working copy, could you give us all edit access? So if we do have questions on that?
I did, I did not out of caution. Unless, is it okay if I make editors of everyone editors for the evening and then turn them back off? All right, I will do that. Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you send it to me again, please? Thank you.
Kenzie is coming your way as well.
Go ahead, Laura. I just want to remind everybody watching that this this bumpy path is because we are doing things the correct way by having these discussions and not violating open record laws or walking forums or anything like that. So this is something we are just seeing now, but it's a little, probably a little painful to watch us. But it's part of the process and it's so that we're doing things correctly.
That's a good point. It's Okay, thank you. I got it.
Okay.
So this document is basically a guide, a guidance for what this advisory committee is going to look like. And how people will be chosen. Some of it still has yet to be decided as in like what the date it would start and the date it would end. I, how many people are going to be on it? These are, these are the details that have yet to be determined, but this is the platform for for what this will look like. Covers, well, as you can see up on the screen now. Yeah, why don't you go ahead, James?
Okay, so first, you'll see in brackets the word vendor. We have graded RFPs for that third party that will help us define the boundaries. There are scheduled finalist presentations for I think it's going to be mid March. So we have a couple of meetings. I'm sorry, September. There'll be a couple of meetings that we can use to refine the document, make sure that it's ready, and the vendor will have input into finalizing the charter because their facilitation, their their experience working with committees, we want to take advantage of that and flesh out and round out the document. But ultimately, we're wanting to have a committee to assist in developing a set of recommended boundary changes required to implement the school consolidations proposed in, and then I named the resolution which we passed on June 5th, which is specific to the transition to K through eight schools, and it impacts about eight to nine schools that are listed in that in that resolution. I added a clause and any basically, basically any direction between now and then that we give the committee through directives because we recognize that there are some actions still in place where we are looking at alternatives for Webster and for Washington and others. I want to make sure that we will include those in the activities of the of the committee, which if we start thinking about this, really kind of creates a horizon for us to make decisions or to get input either from the district around some of those alternatives and the feasibility of those alternatives. So first, I'll stop and make sure that the purpose of the committee So first I'll stop and make sure that the purpose of the committee. Matches everyone's expectations, right? In the resolution, the language was vague. And this is an opportunity for us to be concrete about what the purpose is. And as we get into the roles and responsibilities, to make sure that. We're informing the public correctly and we're setting expectations of what this committee is really enabled to do. And they're, the part that they're going to play because I recognize that some of the public have informed us of. Their desire of what they would like the committee to do and we just need to make sure that we're all on board. So any comments or Lynn?
I don't see the word equity anywhere in here. Is that a separate thing?
So, um, you're, you're correct. In the purpose, the, the. The word equity does not exist. That's, that's just fact. Or we can add it, but it is the end result, what comes out of the committee. That is equitable, right? So if we want to add a clause in here. That's, that's okay. We, we are looking for. Members of the community that may or may not possess. Any kind of skill or aptitude or whatever to, you know, to. Hold them accountable or for an equity portion. So. We have to be careful that we enable the membership of the committee appropriately. So you know, if you, as you think through this over the next couple of weeks, want to propose changes to the purpose. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. Others.
Lynn, do you have a? Proposal to include it in this spot or? Where would you see it falling in as well? And recognizing that we just received this.
I, I just don't. I'm not sure if, if equity is not the driving factor, what is the driving factor here? What are we trying to do with these boundaries? Why are we having a, an advisory committee to help set? Boundaries? What is the goal we're trying to achieve? Is it to create K eight schools? I, I just don't understand what the purpose is.
So the, the, the resolution, this refers back to the resolution where a lot of that detail is. But ultimately, if you go down to the, if you scroll down to the responsibilities portion, Kenzie. So we can just take a read of that because I think we can answer your question or. We can have a conversation of whether or not your concerns are covered. And responsibilities. So Lynn, the data. Will have the demographics and we'll be able to, we'll be able to look at whether or not. We are impacting one demographic or another more. So the members of the committee. Are to provide context, personal perceptions to the data provided by the vendor. And transportation services concerning walkability, network integrity, traffic volume pattern. Body and patterns. So all of that's, that. Information that you take data and then you personalize it or you, you bring it to a local setting. That's the purpose of the committee, right? Vendor is going to be potentially from a different part of the state or a different part of the nation, right? And to, to join that vendor with local representation to say, no, you can't walk. Where you split, you know, neighborhoods, that, that's the wrong split, right? The, the, the goal and the conversation is. They're not, the, the committee is not to intended to be. A alternative source of data or an alternative source or a challenge. Using a, a different set of maps or whatever, that is not. In here, it actually is explicitly called out as a limitation. So if that's your concern, yeah, we have a conversation to have there.
Andrew.
So my, my, my first, my first thing, and I, I think. I. There need to, there needs to be at lea- at least. At least two students on here and usually students has always been mentioned as a separate category. I don't, I. I'm sure you probably envisioned students being on it, but I just wanted to make sure because usually that had been a separate thing. Separately mentioned as a category. In, and the, the at least two is important for a few reasons. Okay, then. As far as, you know, as far as limitations, I see a. I see a problem here that even if it. Is a hypothetical problem, it's, it's still going to be a problem in people's minds. But if we say that you may not. Look at externally, reference externally sourced data. Or you may not create and propose maps. You could have a situation where the vendor has decided where I'm only going to present. I, we're not going to, yeah, I know a lot of. Gee, it looks like a lot of the committee. Might be prioritizing saving a bit less money and keeping a couple more neighborhood schools, but we just won't write the maps for them. That, that could happen and even if it, even if it wouldn't happen, people would read that limitation and think it could happen.
My concern is. The actual maps and the boundaries have to be drawn using our data. Right? And we have, we, we have to trust someone's data, right? And so the source of data that we'll ultimately use for transportation services is our own, right? And then when you look at, you know, the services provided by the vendor. I, I think you've made an assumption that there will be an antagonist antagonistic relationship. Between community members and potentially the vendor, but. All the limitations are intended to do is to say, we need one source of data. That we all trust and that we all come to terms with and that will be the data that we derive maps from. So we can't have, it will not be effective to have someone come to the media and say. Here's all the, the data and the maps that I'm going to use to forward and support my argument. And we don't know if it's valid and we, we, we get into. A competition between two entities around facts and that's not the intention. And I don't think that that's something that we should advocate.
I think my concerns around the words something, and I, I don't need to do this all tonight. We'd be voting on it in two weeks. I think the. But I, I, if. I think in the, the spirit of what you said is probably. I, I'm in agreement with one source of data as well, but just as the. Just as the previous committee had iterations of, of different maps made. It's important to me that even if, even if it's a minority. Segment of the committee that would like to see what it would look like with. Closing fewer buildings or putting the K eight here. That within reason and it shouldn't be that hard with software. But it does, it looks to me that you can't, it looks to me as written. That there's maybe some things where you can't even question that, that the vendor has primacy and how this. This runs, if any dispute. Tie goes, tie goes to the vendor.
Brian.
I think I understand what you're saying with it, Andrew, and it. And James, I don't want to, even very questioned edit access. I don't want to do anything to change your, your, your thing here, but if you're taking notes on. Possible spots to tie in things. Andrew, would it meet your? Concern if the vendor was expected to provide more than one map with different priorities or different. I didn't want to say priorities because that gives a. Takes away the lens of neutrality on it, but different focuses or. Guidelines with it.
And I think they should be, I think they should be generating, I, I, I would think the naturally. If we have a committee, a balanced committee that represents. A range of viewpoints and doesn't represent only. You know, safe voices who will settle for a, quickly settle for a, a middle ground. I will actually challenge ideas. I would imagine many maps would be made just naturally as. Part of such a, a process. I think the, I, I would. I, I don't, I don't know how well our, you know, time is served here today finding the exact word, but if it's. I, I think it's something about the primary, the primacy of the source of data. Not the primacy of who decides if a map gets drawn or not, which I don't think you intended that anyways.
Go ahead.
Two things. One, I, I think that a portion of your concerns can be handled by. Either reading through the responsibilities and providing feedback or adding to the responsibilities. On second, you're right, that it's a little premature in that, you know, we'll go and sit. Finalist presentations as a board and understanding the process. Each vendor has a different proposed process, a different number of iterations that are baked into their estimates. And we need to be comfortable with that. But if you want to make updates to the responsibilities. The mapping limitation is due to they use sophisticated software to generate the maps. We don't, again, want to put. That vendors technology in competition with someone else's methodologies. So the two limitations I really feel strongly about because I think it will create an organized and effective process. The roles and the responsibilities and how we enable the membership to challenge and to require an iteration. On maps, I think we can handle most of your, your concerns in that portion. As you think through updates and what you want to, to provide. So, and, and we don't know that information yet until September.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I just wanted to point out that if you answered part of my question already, if I just scrolled down a little bit. It says the committee's work shall be governed by the following Board of Education policies and procedures. And then when we look at those, I see that. That this is going to have to be within the parameters of. Policies for programs for students with disabilities, class size, equal educational opportunities. Homeless students, attendance areas, transportation services, et cetera. So that covers some of the equity issues that I had in mind. And, and I trust you, I just want to say, I trust you that you are doing this. In the most upright and professional way. So, thank you.
Brian.
Just the facilitation with this, James, if you could, just if we could do paragraph by paragraph and then we could have the talking points on that. And it's been mentioned a couple of times that this might not be the time to wordsmith it. I think this is the time to wordsmith it. So. As a board, making sure that we take that time to do this now. So when we bring it forward at the voting session, we're not. First of all, we're not making motions on the fly and it makes Kenzie's job easier, but also. We, we can have this conversation now with it, so.
I think I'll just, I'll just add my two cents. I mean, we're going to know more after we see these presentations from vendors. Well, I, I expect to have a much firmer understanding of this process. And what's going to happen after we see those presentations. And also I am in favor of having a, a document that gives firm guardrails to this, this process so that it doesn't. You know, descend into chaos. I just, I, I need that. You know, but, but even with firm guardrails, there's I think room for. You know, for flexibility as well. So go ahead, Brian.
Football season's coming up and when we officiate football, we have a list of rules and that's the expectation with it. There's the spirit of the rule and there's a little bit of wiggle room in there, but I don't want to see it. Dive into judgment calls being questioned, you know, that's, that's part of our responsibility. Selective officials is our, our judgment and if people are unhappy with it. You know, there, there's elections. So. I hope I'm making sense of that. I'm on the same page with you. I think we need to have those guidelines there and, and allow the wiggle room within the committee.
And we have.
When it's.
We have already done the, the facility study that ATS and Art did as a foundational document. We have the work of the task force. They spent hours, months working on that. They made a recommendation that is foundational as well. That doesn't, it's not cemented, but it's, but it, these are things that we can draw from as far as guidance and now we're going to do this next phase. That's how I look at it. So, go ahead.
And it continues to give the specific charge to the committee, just as. The previous committee had a charge to focus on bricks and mortar and we had a lot of community members give a lot of time to doing that. They, they stuck to the charge that they were given. So. Same, same, I agree 100% with you on that. Making sure that whoever volunteers on this committee and whoever is selected has that charge. So we're not having other things come up with it, so.
And I just would remind people that we're, you know, this new policy we have around advisory committees. This is the first time we're testing this. So. I would just ask for a little bit of patience as we figure this out. Everyone in the, at this table has good intentions. We want to get it right. So go ahead, James.
So going back to the top, to purpose. And. Andrew brings up, all right, through conversation, a point that. I think we need to take on, right? So the purpose was written to be very directive, right? There was a resolution, we passed it. There is a list of schools impacted and there's a plan there, right? And that origins of all of that impact came from the task force, right? I added a second portion to that sentence to allow for changes. To that resolution directed by us. So Andrew, when you say the. The committee may want to experiment with not doing this and, and keeping more schools open or whatever. I had not envisioned it to be the charge of the committee to be the origin of new ideas or concepts. But to make sure that the boundaries associated and challenge the boundaries. So if they got to a point where they say. We're not comfortable with the size of boundary or the transportation services within the boundary to support the K eight program. To surface that, but to through mapping. To say, I want to determine if we can as 12 people, even though we've had a consultant. And then another task force creates some recommendations that they would then usurp the power to say, I'm going to experiment. And be the origin of here's five schools that we want to keep open and the boundaries associated. I didn't see that as a, a charge for this committee.
I would agree with that. We've already, we're, we're too far down the road on that.
So any changes that we would want to see, we would, the, the district or we would bring them. And we would then provide direction through this purpose. To the committee to say, here are the alternatives as outlined in that resolution that we want you to consider.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so. We already. Like tonight, there's been more talk about it, you know, there isn't, there, there isn't Webster K eight and the final. Proposal, but that, that is maybe being discussed, right? So. Are you saying that would be? On the table, off the table or not on the table yet, but we're, we would, the board would put it onto the table?
Yeah, go ahead.
And this is kind of tied into that. I would assume that anything that we would act. To add would be voted on by the board. And my follow-up with that, Andrew, is that was voted on as a possibility when we were discussing the resolutions before. So when. I don't want it to become off as one person, one board member is interested in it because. When it's saying that's by the Board of Education, that's something that has been voted on and that's something that the seven of us have. Yeah, seven of us have had as an opportunity to discuss and. Again, for the transparency, but also so it's not. Pieced meal together with it. Does that kind of address it, Andrew, or no?
Kind of, although I hope, I hope there isn't a threshold of. All ideas require a majority vote to even be looked at. Uh, that, that would be a, that would be a concern. Obviously, a majority vote is needed to, to pass. And my. So I, I would be, I would be concerned about that and. The reality is, and I know there's people who. Want to just be ultra-safe, ultra-safe financially. As a primary value and that's, it is a legitimate value. How, how many schools I might think need to be consolidated. Now versus three months ago is a bit different. Right? The, the state funding did not go from. Horrible to amazing and unicorns and rainbows, but. I think most would say it got. Not just better, but much better than expected and there's an ongoing component. So I don't know what that. Looks like and if the, if the way to do that. Either is included between the lines and some of the resolutions that, that we did. Like Webster, you know, also the. Um, like Webster, you know, also the other thing is, um, we heard a lot of community feedback that perhaps some of the places where the K eights would be are not the correct places for the K eights. That in fact, that was a fundamental concern of large segments of the community. So would the, would this committee not be able to take that up? Or did we already authorize them taking it up? Or did we not yet, but will make sure to? If they wanna move where the K eights are.
So the, this committee was basically directed by the resolution associated with the K eights, right? So we have other resolutions that are, can we, action can be taken outside of the boundary, right? We're talking about Wicquart, we've talked about tank, we're talking about a referendum question that would lead to some consolidation on the western side of of Green Bay. The committee charter is based on that resolution. There's one line in that resolution that says, you know, we can direct the district to look for alternatives, right? The line establishing the reason why this committee was created was to make sure that the boundaries were equitable and did not impact one population more than the other. This was not commissioned as an exploratory committee to look for the alternatives outlined. So I don't think the membership would be in the position or have information necessary to make those recommendations. Uh, we, you know, those were brought out by additional conversations that the district had had with the city and other things that, um, you know, we were, the district was looking to explore. This committee um, was was not charged in that resolution for doing that. So that's why this is an important conversation, because everyone needs to move in to this and direct the committee, you know, to address the appropriate scope. They will be getting maps and they will be getting data associated with maps that show the feeder programs and show the new boundaries that would support the K eights, uh, Langley, K eights, McAuliffe, and other consolidation that's addressed in the scope of that resolution and make decisions whether or not we can pull that off and have an equitable distribution of resources, whatever. Or if the output could be Board of Education, we don't believe in this, we, in this set of maps. But to then go in and enable this committee to say, here are a bunch of different variations of closures. Um, I'm not prepared to give them that, uh, enable that activity. Um, so.
Brian.
The goal of it is also to make sure that we're providing the best schools that are being utilized the most. So and providing the best educational opportunity for our students. And if it comes down to, if we have a building that is half full and we can provide better programming and still have the students in this general big footprint of it, we need to look at that. You know, obviously, the number one driver behind this was the the cliff that we're still facing. And the second one is making sure that we are providing the best programming possible for our students. And if it's a, if it's a building that's a third full, it does not make sense to keep it open. And looking at that, and and I know it's gonna be a tough decision between neighborhood schools and making sure that we have thriving buildings where we have them. But we also cannot continue to kick the can down the road with it, so.
After all that has been put into this process and is yet to come, I am not willing to do that either. We've been, there's been too much work done on this and we have to focus on that goal. Also, I think we need to decouple in people's heads what the state has just done for us and all districts in this, in this state and this fiscal cliff. They're not the same. They're separate and different. And um, and that fiscal cliff is still coming despite what the state just did. So it's, it's important that we don't lose sight of that. We're still, we're still very much in need of drastic change in this district. So are there any more questions? Go, go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so I recall correctly, and I was at all this stuff, there was, um, there were very strong concerns mentioned about the uh, potential equity implications of essentially having all of the uh, all of the K eights outside of this yellow circle, you know, inside of which was the highest concentration of Latino families and outside of which was was not. So if this committee, which is supposed to be about equity, is only able to redraw the boundaries of, well, we could put the boundary for the K eight that must be at Langley here, or we can put the boundary of the K eight that must be at McAuliffe or Franklin here. How does the idea of the K eight, uh, a K eight somewhere else better serves the needs of the people? Right? How does, where does that, how does that get put into the mix then? We do it?
You're
Or we did it with the resolution, one line.
So, um, heard the same concerns, right? And I was sensitive to them. Um, we modified the resolution to enable alternative um, locations to be explored and and submitted. We only differ of where the origin is for those recommendations, right? I I thought that the resolution directed the district to look for those recommendations, right? Because that's, that was the direction. Um, and that the committee would be the recipients of any additions or or changes to the, the plan and incorporate them into a boundary study, right? Because I agree with Brian, there's a lot of information necessary to make decisions about which schools, which, because we've had it. We even after the consultant and after the task force, we had to come up and pause, tank the Beaumont because, you know, there is characteristics about the population of Beaumont that invalidated that movement. So to enable and say, here's some demographic data, um, experiment, I I just don't think that it's it's reasonable to enable that group of people, um, to to do that. To make sure that whatever we put forward can be executed in an equitable way and that the realities of, so we've made assumptions that we can put a K eight at a certain location. We can create a population that was diverse there. It will be the demographic data and the actual boundary map, which will prove that out, right? And that's the, the committee being able to say, well, yeah, on on the map looks good, but let's talk about the characteristics of certain subdivisions in in that, within that boundary. And it starts looking less good, right? So, um, I agree that there may be a conversation whether or not we have strong enough direction to the district or if the district is the correct place for all um, alternatives. Um, I just don't think we're, we should assemble 12 new people, orient them to a task and give them such broad scope, um, to to accomplish that in the, the vendor's gonna say, we'll meet five times or six times with a committee as part of our estimated cost. I, that's just a bridge too far.
Brian.
I think when we're, when we're looking at this issue as well, we need to remember the fact that we are outside of two or three buildings when I was going through and checking, we're a majority minority school district or we are very close to it at just about every one of our buildings. So when we look at this and take into consideration the boundary drawings on that, we need to look at the diversity of the building, we're gonna need to look at our socioeconomic status, we're gonna need to look at how how deep we wanna dive, our students with disabilities and and the other issue, the other variety of students that we serve in our district. And we can't stare at our belly button for the whole time on it either. You know, we, we're gonna need to make our decisions with it as well. But recognizing that we are a minority or majority minority district in a lot of our buildings, which is one of the things that makes our district great. But to to focus on one particular building or one quadrant isn't doing justice to the other parts of the district as well.
Just one demographic.
Right.
You know, like, like, there's a lot of different kinds of diversity. So, um, I feel like we should probably start moving on here a little bit, okay? Um, did, are we going to wordsmith this now? Do people have things they wanna add? Go ahead, Laura.
I need time to read. I mean, we just saw this. I need to process, not under a spotlight.
I, I, we've taken a lot of time on this already and we have a lot more to talk about tonight. So I'm going to just ask if if people would be okay with sitting with this document for a couple of weeks. Plan on our agenda next time where we're going to bring our, our, our changes, our suggestions and and do it then. Is, are people okay with that generally? Or do, or do you wanna get at it tonight? No. Um, I, I, go ahead.
Is it important that we, we, um, look at the, the vendors first or pick a fan? I mean, you know, I don't understand that part.
So it'll they will be able to inform some of this and provide some details. And the goal tonight really was to introduce the purpose. I think it was a meaningful conversation because I don't think we were on the same page as to what this committee was gonna be tasked to do. Think that is reasonable for everyone to walk away and and, you know, check themselves and come back. Make sure that we all can do that. Oh, I would encourage you to look at the membership as well because, you know, the characteristics of how many people are in the room will lead to how effective they're gonna be over the course of X number of meetings, doing this iteration. So give a lot of thought to what you think is, you know, the number, um, should be. I, I know personally, as an individual board member, I think that the last, um, task force was large. Um, and it's hard to get, you know, 24 people all thinking in the, you know, the same direction. And so, you know, we, we wanna give some thought to that.
Um, go ahead, Brian.
Appreciate completely what you're saying with the under the spotlight part of it. I recognize the time part, but this is, this is our duty. So if the meeting goes late, the meeting goes later with it. It's my understanding that we aren't, now that's been introduced, we aren't even allowed to necessarily give individual feedback because of the, the, this has been introduced already. So, um, either we are ready to spend some time on it at the next meeting and can propose a motion at the end with that or some, some way that we have that time. So Kenzie isn't coming up with a big proposal on the fly with it. So I'm not sure the best way that we would be able to do that.
Is there, and is there any reason why we have to vote on this at the next meeting? Yeah, there's not.
Yeah, we have
Yeah, so, so, so everyone, take a breath. We don't, we're not in a huge rush here. So go, yeah, go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to respond. Um, I have no problem being here as long as needs to be here. As, as an educator, you understand different learning styles and I do need to read and process. Okay.
No, I'm totally, I totally
Okay.
With you there.
Um, also, um, to answer Nancy's question, I think it's really important that we know what we're looking for before we decide or review the vendors, because you don't wanna go and buy a car and end up coming home with a moon roof when you want it's not a moon roof. You know, if they sell it, you know, so I think it's important. We need to know what we're looking for before we
Okay.
um, establish that with a vendor.
Okay, so, um, Andrew, are you, okay?
Now that we're not voting in two weeks, I'm fine.
Lynn.
I just wanna throw this out also that I've said this before and I wanna say it again because I don't see it reflected here. I know we're gonna have time to think about this and talk about it. I just think it's critical that in deciding how these people are going to be chosen, we are going to have objective, measurable characteristics that can be defended so that we don't say, well, you saw the criteria and then our board president and the superintendent decided which people, you know, fit. It just, we have to be, we have to be objective and we have to be clear and specific and measurable.
Okay. James.
I appreciate that. I struggled a lot in that creating the qualifications for membership. And so you notice all of them are, you have to live in the district, you have to have kids in the district. If you're, um, if you're a parent, you don't have to live in the district, but they have to be. So I, beyond that, the qualifications that we, you would consider objective that would, you know, be some competency that someone would bring to the board, please come next meeting with a list of those because I I got bogged down and I, I, I would appreciate help.
Laura.
I think it's a great point, Lynn. If we could all maybe bring our ideas of selection criteria, because if we have 150 applicants that wanna serve on this committee, we wanna know how we're gonna select the best and make sure that we have a broad demographic of what's needed to provide input.
Okay, all right. Um, Brian.
Since we can't adjust this as a Google document, would it be okay for the board to have a copy of this?
I suggest we each make your own copy and then you work off your own copy.
All right. We're gonna proceed with caution on this, guys, okay? Um, all right. I think we should probably wrap that up and move on, guys. Um, are we gonna get an update then on the Wicquart resolution? Or is that gonna be under the superintendent report?
So we can
Okay, all right. We're gonna move on to number four, superintendent's report, and I'm going to hand that over to Dr. Tiller. Oh, before we start, I'm sorry, I just wanna greet Viva, who is able to join us. I'm, I'm so glad you were able to come. Um, would you just take a moment and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Viva. I'm a senior at Southwest and I'm the president of our InterCity Student Council.
Very good. Welcome. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Tiller.
Kenzie, if you could take those unhide. Go back in there for me, please. Yep, yep, and take those, those first, see them? Yep, unhide them, yep. There you go. Thank you. All right, there we go. Okay, so, um, this is something new. Uh, this is superintendent's report. So what I've done, I've worked with my team and, um, every point we have collaborated. So when I sent out the document that, um, if you have any questions, that's why I sent out prior so that you could read over it so we can kinda expedite some things. Even if you have questions here, then that's fine. Um, but that's what superintendent's report will cover. So the first one, let's talk about that. It will be an action needed. Uh, no action will take place today, of course. So the first one, what we did was the team, we teased out just Wicquart and we addressed the five points that was made in the resolution. Uh, the first one, revising transportation plans um, and safe and timely transit to and from schools for all students by bus. As you can see there, the, uh, is a cost neutral. Uh, that came from our transportation department. Any questions on that piece? Number two, documenting the necessary boundary changes. Uh, that wasn't addressed because if you move the boundaries, it includes Red Smith anyway. So that, that was came null and void. Number three, determine the feasibility of providing equivalent environmental education program at Red Smith. So we had our teaching and learning team get together along with the principal, along with the, um, the current serving administrator at Wicquart. And as you can see at A, the current adventure partnership with Wicquart will be expanded to Red Smith as we move forward, beginning, uh, with the, uh, 24, 25 school year. Uh, the district teaching and learning department will assign a curriculum coordinator. So it's very important to us that this is aligned and make sure that we move forward with that uh, alignment with the Wisconsin standards of environmental literacy and sustainability. That was underlined there. See current
Can I make a
Sure.
I just wanted to note, um, in this, as reading through this, um, and clicking on that Wisconsin standards, environmental literacy and sustainability, there is a Wisconsin Standards Environmental Literacy and Sustainability, there is a writing team. This was back in twenty eighteen. In that writing team, which people from all across the the state, we actually have a representative from our district, Ned Dorf from Aldo Leopold. I was really happy to see that, and I just wanted to note that. That's all. Yep. Go ahead, Brian.
Once this has been set, and that's kind of where I was going with this, is that we have other schools that have some environmental education part of it. And with the being on the state standards, this would, of course, be able to be shared with throughout the district. So students would have that opportunity or at least the resources tied in, correct?
That is correct.
So sorry to interrupt you, but I just thought it was important to know that when those standards were being set, we had representation from our district there.
Okay, um, moving on to C, current Red Smith Outdoor Learning Spaces uh will be evaluated throughout the twenty three, twenty four school year to provide opportunities for authentic learning experience. Number four, create a detailed list of non-reparendum dependent projects and their capital requirements. So uh, we looked at that piece and per the facility cost index uh that our uh operational team looked at, there will be a ninety six thousand, three hundred dollars worth of high priority fiscal plant needs at Red Smith. Um, and we will address those. That's what this did. The board has had five years. I won't get into that. You can see that. Uh, so we will address those uh to create uh that answers number four. Um, number five, document the necessary agreement uh with the Green Bay to ensure that Red Smith Community Schools can use the adjacent Red Smith City Park for educational purpose. We have done that already. So all city agreements have been documented to ensure that Red Smith students can and use Red Smith City Park for educational purposes. So on the twenty eighth, we're asking for a vote on the week we act resolution.
About that, will will um whatever we agreement we have with the city, will that um, will that include, will that were any part of that be an expense for our district? Or or is it just a of like a agreement with the city that we have access?
Yes, it's just agreement with the city.
Thank you.
So that's that's that piece. Uh, next on the agenda is that the uh we need an action needed. The head start federal grant carryover um request, we're requesting that the amount there thirty three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and eight cent be carried over for renovation of the Headstop Learning Center on Bellevue Street. These are needed fully funded projects um moving forward. And I also included in your board packet, the carryover request grant narrative of exactly what we need for that piece and why we need it for that piece. And it basically uh it will allow more room to spread out over the family advocate and management staff. They are currently uh in the same office and their desks are not six feet from each other. This addition also adding space for parents to meet in a larger room, which will help prevent the spread of illness. So that's what the main carryover piece would be for that. Yes.
Are you, are we asking questions um to to fully understand this now, or are we going to come back to each one of these items? I just want to make sure I understand. My colleagues have tried to explain this to me. Carryover request means, I understand it means going back to last year's grant and bringing the money forward to this fiscal year, last year's federal grant. It doesn't mean we're asking to take money out of the operating budget and put it into this. Okay, thank you.
Uh, the head start federal grant waiver for non-federal match requests. So revision of one-time grant federal funding opportunity to waive a non-federal match request. This grant has already been submitted, so we already received this grant already. The Office of Head Start has requested an updated narrative request for this waiver. The grant is a one-time funding request for two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars complete construction project on the Headstop Learning, again, at our Bellevue uh street location. Uh, so you can see that in the, I also included that in the board packet. Uh, so we're asking for a vote on the twenty eighth for non-federal match request waivers. We're just asking for that waiver for the grant that we have already received on that.
This isn't really a question. It's more historical context. This this isn't the first time this happened. This this happens from time to time that there's this money. Uh, there's money left over from a grant, and um it beca- it almost becomes um it's it's really hard to actually just give it back. So what happens is that it gets incorporated and it's insanely hard. Um, and it what happens is that it's incorporated into the next year's planning and 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 um used in in some um, you know, some good way. And this addition onto that building is um just very needed. They that that program is thriving. They need that extra space for all the special services and that they've it's been in the planning for at least, I think, three years. Nancy's um the liaison with Head Start. So you guys talk about this a lot. Yeah.
Question, Brian. Oh, go ahead.
I in regards to the use of the park at Red Smith, that's an agreement that we have with the city for all of our parks. So we would also be able to utilize that same environmental study that we've done for any city school that has a park, which is all of them from the top of my head with it. So it's good that it's being addressed with the concern with week we are coming in. But once again, it can benefit our students throughout the district, at least within the city limits. And I'm sure Aloe is not going to kick us out of a park if they're using it for educational purposes as well on there. So just I wanted to bring that forward, Lynn, with with your question on that as well. So.
Thank you. Um. The next one is dealing with the fencing. Again, our head start uh program. Currently, we're uh need to build, uh, we have a four-foot tall fence. We need to build it at six foot. That's the gist of this slide, and it's going to cost us thirty six thousand, four hundred and six dollars uh for that. So we're asking again, action needed on the twenty eighth, just to grant request for the approval to move from the four-foot fence to six-foot fence uh for the uh head start program.
If people are squeamish about that amount, it's a very, it inc- incloses quite a large space.
Now, let's go to, let's go to Act Twenty. Act Twenty, that was instituted in July nineteenth, uh, which is recent, twenty twenty-three. Act Twenty is a statewide adherence to science-based early literacy instruction uh for students in grades kindergarten through third grade. So this is informational. So the Department DPI, Department of Public Instruction must first do, these are the things that the DPI must do. A first, establish an office of literacy, provide a recommended list of literacy curriculum, select a universal screener, uh approve a professional development training program, select a four K, provide a model policy for third to fourth grade promotion. This is what DPI is in the current process, Department of Public Instruction is currently in the process of doing now since the act was instituted in July nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Now, these are the things that we must do as a district. It must be our next steps. Uh, we must adopt and implement a K through three science-based early literacy curriculum instructional resources. And I when I had my team put together, what's the day at line? So September twenty twenty-four, so next year. Uh, continue the current curriculum process for adopting the K through eight ELA resources again by March twenty twenty-four. So we're just continuing the process that we are in now. Review various science-based early literacy instruction training programs present to twenty twenty-five on that. Using multi-level systems of support process to meet the universal and diagnostic assessment requirements. Again, twenty twenty-four of September. Um, use the current literacy intervention systems to meet the intervention annual reporting and monitoring request July twenty twenty-five. Establish a communication plan for parents to make sure we keep them abreast the whole entire time uh as members. This goes from twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So it was very important that we will and we will currently always keep the parents involved. Develop a policy for third to fourth grade promotion. This is what we must do, and it must be instituted enacted on by July twenty twenty-five. Questions?
So it was my understanding that this um whatever curriculum is chosen is going to be um uh put to trial starting in September of twenty twenty-four. But um, so we don't have to make the decision, adopt and oh, okay, adopt and implement. Okay, so we don't adopt it by September twenty-four. We've got adopted and ready to be implemented to be tried. Okay, thanks.
Um, so develop a policy for third, third to fourth grade promotion. Is that going, is are all the districts doing that themselves, or is it going to be aided by the state?
So they're going to give us, so they're going to give us some guidelines as we move forward. So we know exactly that we fall within the guidelines. Okay. K through eight, this is informational as well. K through eight, English Language Arts, Arts Adoption. We will continue to follow the curriculum cycle for adoption. Funding sources will come from Esser. So remember, Esser is running out, but it will come from Esser. Review of the resources criteria must include the science of reading, rated green on Ed Report meets all Wisconsin State Standards. So they're having a strict guideline that we must follow. So it's almost like they're telling us uh which way to go. They give us very little wiggle word uh in order to decide. So we're going to make sure we follow them within these guidelines. And that's by uh the fall of twenty twenty-three, October. Uh, resources will be in all K through eight schools for review. This is uh the reviewing process that would be starting this fall of the curriculum. Yes. Uh, one or two. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So when we talked about what the DPI is doing with the Act Twenty, it said, provide a recommended list of literacy curriculum and instructional materials. So the DPI is making a list, right?
That is correct.
When we selected the materials that we want to pilot or do trial on this fall, um, we just had to follow the green, the things that. So are those two different things, or are, do you know, are there others on the list?
It could be others on the list, but we making sure that we follow that green piece, so which DPI gave us. So we can kind of be right in the, get a head start, if you will.
But shouldn't all the ones on the list be approved by DPI also? Right? The list that they would give us would have the, they should all be green?
Yes.
Just for some clarification on this, the K language arts adoption with the fall twenty twenty-three, this is the normal cycle with it, and it's independent of Act Twenty, correct?
Correct. Winter twenty twenty-three, December resource will be selected by two uh border education members, principals and teachers in the trial for uh viability will be implemented by all interested teachers. Uh, so we want to make sure that everyone is included in that process. Spring, March twenty twenty-four recommendation for adoption and professional development. Then we put a plan in place, as you can see there. Spring twenty twenty-four to August twenty twenty-four professional development for all K through eight ELA teachers will start to begin in fall twenty twenty-four implementation of K through eight ELA resources. Next action that we need um is the after-school programming. This is um that we have been using for years, community partner contracts, request approval of action. So we have been recommended, we have been working with the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center, YMCA of Greater Green Bay, Boys and Girls Club, and we want to continue this partnership. But what was very important to me in my team made sure that we asked the principals of these buildings. Uh, because coming on board, I want to make sure that we didn't we didn't put anything or shove anything down their throats. Uh, so it was very important that they ask each one of the principals. And as you can see up there, all twelve principals unanimously responded yes.
Didn't we just previously approve a contract within the last three months on this already?
Not to my understanding, not for this. This is coming up. Um, so we're asking for a vote on August twenty eighth to approve after-school program community partners contracts. So this is, this is kind of dear and close to me. Recommendation for adoption for Imagine Learning Edgenuity is a competency-based computerized curriculum instruction platform implemented in all four district high schools used for course completion to obtain credit towards graduation. Used in the PACE alternate program. And so this cause you can see at the bottom, the total price for all four high schools. This is currently one of my goals that um uh my communication director, where she is Lori back there, she she cringes when I say this in the media. But I'm going for one hundred percent graduation rate this year, not two years down the line, not three years down the line. But this year, we currently have about roughly about three hundred and eighty-two students off track. That's very low, and this summer school has not completed yet. So we have the opportunity through Edgenuity, which I used in Detroit, which I was written up in the paper, my team was, is moving the uh graduation rate for the first time since nineteen seventy-one. This is one of the tools that we use to do this. Um, questions?
And this would still be facilitated by our staff, and it would be a program under our supervision and not farmed out to any other program. It's it's another tool similar to our repo program and other opportunities there.
Exactly. In fact, it's going to be part of the process of replacing the repo uh program as well. So just let the board uh know that I don't believe in giving anything out when we have talent right here in the district. And uh us teachers are very fantastic.
Will this be um paid for with Esser?
Yes.
So this kind of falls into that um uh criteria of policy where it's a large expenditure um that comes to the board. Uh, typically, we have two criteria. One is um a competitive bid where there's multiple, you know, the RFP or RFI created, we get multiple options and and we, you know, we we choose the best one, or you know, there is a single source process, but there is criteria that we needed to use a single source. So I recognize that this is something that used in um Detroit. But I I would look to the board, is everyone comfortable with a a individual package that kind of is unchallenged to a competitive process? And are we okay with that kind of expenditure without? Because this is a, this is actually just kind of bypassing policy. And I'm concerned with setting precedent if there's, because it crosses a threshold that we have approval, and there's certain. I mean, the most of the information is here, except that so if you can say, yeah, this is a sole source, and here's is why we're able to piggyback a pre-existing contract in the state. That's usually the reason why we're able to soul so single source.
So your question is?
Um. So this this um came up quickly. And typically, a expenditure of this amount in a educational software of space is usually competitive, where the the district demonstrates that they went through the process of evaluating multiple packages. And for X reasons, this is the one that's chosen, right? And I recognize that your experience with this is valuable and speaks a lot. I'm asking the board if we're willing to take your experience and bypass policy to say, yes, go ahead and and make this expenditure without it being a competitive process.
And also. Also, I want to add, this is a single source. Also, I want to add, this is a single source that has been tested and proved 100%. You can't get any higher than that.
I want to see the data. I want to know that this is not going to just be a way to get young people who have not been coming to school and who have not been participating in their, in their education to simply fill in some easy blanks and then get a diploma and say, I graduated from Green Bay area public schools. I want to know that it's quality education. How can I find that out?
So we can provide you, I put inside the board docs, the exactly spelling out everything. But I can give you more information if you need that.
And, sorry.
I, I'm. I'm pretty, I'm, I'm pretty okay with this and people might expect me to, to, to not, not be okay with not going out for bid on something. I'm presuming Dr. Tiller that you have. So first of all, we have, we have one or more computer based things in the, in the district now. You looked at them. You compared it to, you compared it to what you were, what you introduced and you had, you had good results with. So to go through a competitive bidding process that would presumably be some of the things we already have. This. And then maybe some other things that would be in there, knowing that your recommendation would probably, you're satisfied enough with this. I would assume that even if there was a bit of a cost differential, you still want to go this route. To me it is. It's, it's different than if. If you wanted a specific boiler, because you liked a certain boiler a lot in Detroit. I'd probably say, sorry, but we have to bid, right? They're, they're too interchangeable. I, I would be okay here because I think there's, each of them is unique enough. It might be on the bubble of whether it's unique enough, but it's, it's unique enough for me.
Brian.
Through the chair, James, I, I agree with you. I didn't even think of that part of this when this came up. I am uncomfortable voting on something with this without going out for bid, especially. This isn't something that's going to be implemented on September 1st, you know? So there's, there's not a hard deadline on there for it to be interacted with. If it's, if it's a good product, it should be able to survive going to the bid. I agree with the concept of it. I just don't, I don't feel comfortable staying that precedent of we've done this when it's, as James said, I agree. I think it's skirting board policy on it and this is not a time sensitive thing. We put out to bid for roofs for everything and there's one person, one company that bids on it on a regular basis, you know? So having this, I think we need, I feel as an individual more comfortable having this as an opportunity for going out to bid for other similar programs on there.
So a couple of things, just got a text, we did do comparative. So you'll have that information and it is, we're trying to institute it by September 1st. Because the kids can't wait. We have 352 kids that's off track. We cannot wait for them or they will stay off track and we will not hit our goals of 100% graduation. They need to be immediately be implemented into the program through the council's time they come back to school. So they have been comparing, I can share that data with you.
James.
Yeah, I hear you. Please share the data and, and provide. Cause if you say a single source and there is a compelling, you know, set of evidence that there aren't comparable alternatives. Like we did that for the security system in that it was a novel implementation and there were no comparables. So we, we went single source on, on that. But I, 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 I need to see something in support of that. I recognize it. It's, it's August. And so to introduce concept and say September 1 is deadline. It's, that's a hard, a hard call for me, right? Because we still are trying to govern the budget and, and be fiscally responsible. And these are just some steps that I, I really feel are necessary for us to do our job. All right. To make sure that the money is going in the right direction.
Go ahead, Brian.
I agree. And if we, if we have that information for the next meeting and making sure that we're following the policies that we've had with that beforehand. I'm, I'm fine with this, but recognizing that we have these policies set up. So we can do our job with it as well on here. I think that, I don't think, I know that we have programs set up for repo for credit acceleration and to make sure the programs work. So the September 1st deadline would be fantastic to get set. I agree that we need to make sure our students are graduating, but we, we've been addressing that in Green Bay as well. You know, that we're, we have the program set up as well. And if this is a stronger program, I'm all for it, but we've, we've been working on that. So.
I would like to, this is going to, you said this is going to replace some, something that we already have. Is it just one, one thing that we're doing or several things like? That's something I would like to know and I, I need, I need more. I need to, I need to. Your, your reminder about the security system when we went around that for a while before we could get to a yes on that because of the expense and the complexity of the implementation and all the effects at every single school. And so I feel, I'm feeling a little rushed on this and that's where I am on that. Sorry. Laura?
I think with this, I, I, a number of things, I think with the security system, that was, I don't even remember the amount of millions of dollars that was, that was, I mean, that was a significant cost. I think this presenting this to me, I'm, I'm curious about this program and not that it's going to hinge on my decision or anything. But I'm just really curious because what I, another thing that I'm interested in, in learning about, and this has been a discussion with some of the youth enrichment services staff with Oneida Nation that work in our Green Bay area public schools. Has been a concern that some of the alternative to graduation programs don't have our kids college community career ready. And so I would love to see a program that's going to help have them be successful once already. And again, that's just anecdotal, but there's a concern that we don't want to lower our expectations or the competencies. And I saw that that's, it's competency based. So that's good. But we want to make sure that our graduates have what they need to be successful. And so I'm like to learn more, but not, my vote does not hinge on that, but just to, to learn more about the program. So it can help propose, be a supporter of it as well.
Viva, did you have something? Okay, all right. Please time in. We always love it when you do. So go ahead, Lynn.
So as far as the cost, you, you did say it will be purchased by Esther funds, but of course that's just the first year. There is, it's a multi-year contract. So we will have to be paying on this every year, right? But this is replacing something is repo. We will not be paying for that in the future. So this is going to be, this is, as far as the budget goes, Angie's good with this?
Oh, please don't.
I mean, I seriously, it's we, the Esther funds will be gone after next year. And then the question is, are we going to be adding to, you know, our, an annual expense? Or is this going to equal out with what we're discontinuing? I don't know.
So a couple of things, I will get all the information, my team hears what needs to be done. Out there in the audience will have that for you ASAP. I understand. I just want the board to understand my, my thinking, my philosophy is that I, I know it seems kind of rushed. But that's the way I transform. I'm, I'm, I'm there. I'm, I'm, I love to get in there and change things. I don't think our kids have two, three, four years down the line. So I just want to let you know my thought and I, and I appreciate that. But you have every piece of information you want moving forward.
Viva, she changed her mind.
It did change my mind. I just have a quick question. So I, I'm looking at a document on our district website. And it says under repo that it's only for students in special education that are lacking in credits. Is that correct? Okay.
Is this just for special education?
No. So this is, this is for everybody.
Andrew?
One, one other, one other dimension of this too is that this is not a, this is not conceptually new to have a, some kind of technology assisted self-paced credit recovery program. So if, if we had, if we had never done that before, and this was a brand new idea, I'd feel a stronger need to have formal competitive bidding as opposed to competitive comparative data. But we already in, in essence have, would have, you know, you have your comparatives, your, your assessment that it's superior to what we're doing now. So that, that is a kind of a difference for me too, that makes it easier to, to do a change like this. And if it was, you know, if it was a million dollars, I'd probably be in a different place. So this is a area that I'm, I'm comfortable with.
So from what you've shared, if we buy, so multi-year is that three years?
Yes.
So for three years, if we do all three years at once with Esther money, we will get that rather hefty discount. Okay. But then those three, let's just say we, we purchase it. It's fantastic. We want to keep going. Then we'll have to renegotiate that contract, right? Or, or, yeah, for a fourth year, is it year by year after that then? Or do you do re-up for another three?
You can do is à la carte.
Go ahead, put your, yeah.
It's à la carte. So you can choose yearly, you can choose multiple years. The more years you choose, of course, the bigger discount you get.
Okay. All right. I just want to look into the future a little bit. So, okay. Viva, please.
Sorry, I don't want to keep like interrupting.
You interrupt. No.
Is this gonna be like this purchases is going to be in addition to the programs that we already have in place for? I don't know what it's called, like gain, regaining credits once you're like into like junior and senior year.
So I was understanding Apex, that's a, that's a program that you're currently using. So we will look at replacing that as well.
Laura?
I, I just wanted to comment about, I think what the definition of insanity is doing the same thing again and again, and expecting different results, right? So I appreciate Dr. Tiller, you bringing this forward, bringing it back with the expediency you are bringing. As I shared my challenge, I just want to make sure that we're doing the best thing for our students. But I appreciate your leadership and direction in, in making swift change. So thank you.
Brian?
Prior to any replacement of Apex, we would be hearing from teaching and learning about the successes that they've had. This wouldn't be a one and done. We're cutting off one program and starting the other one right away on there, correct?
When I, so another glimpse into your superintendent's head, your superintendent is very much in the data. I'm very much in the longitudinal data. So I look at three year spans before I make any decisions. If it has not been used and have not been moved over three years, then I look at replacing it or moving it or tweaking it a different way. Did, did that get your answer?
Being someone, and I fully appreciate that, but being someone that's been somehow associated with this district for over 20 years. We have a tendency of switching horses midstream often and not allowing the fidelity to go through. So I think between the two, there's, there's a happy medium in there and I appreciate the data driven part of it. But this district has been driven by initiatives a lot and have switched focus with it. And I just want to make sure that we have the data on there. We're not, it's going to sound counterproductive that I'm saying, I don't want to switch one program and have two programs on the plate, but I also don't want to switching horses midstream on there. So I'm not saying I'm against the program. I think that the timeline concerns me with it. I obviously want our students to be successful and find the best opportunities for them. But the vote on it in two weeks concerns me.
All right.
Okay. So this is informational. So get, give you a glimpse into this piece. When I was a little selfishness here, so when I came on board, I saw all these different pathways that these high schools had. And I was hearing all these different pathways. So I said, I need a cheat sheet. And I need to look at one, two, maybe three sheets max that it can tell me exactly how the feeders work. The fine hours program, where do you go? So this was the birth of this piece for my teaching and learning department moving forward. I received some feedback from president and vice president today. So we're going to look at that and tweak that piece moving forward. The, the, the feedback was that it can a little bit overwhelming. So we were looking at possibly taking each of the four high schools and putting that at the top and then drawing the pathways in the feeders there. So having four individual sheets instead of one sheet. So this is strictly informational.
It might be informational, but I was, I will say it is wonderful. This is what I've been wanting. This is beautiful. I don't even, if you didn't tweak it, it would be wonderful. I can follow it and I can see what percentage of students move from this school to that school. And I can see the pathways. Thank you, whoever did this. Thank you.
I think it has something to do maybe with newness, like you're new, she's new. And so having that cheat sheet is, is really useful, you know? So I, I think that this is great, but another version of it might be great too. So can have two versions of the same thing. Go ahead, James.
And to be clear, when we were talking about the tweaks, it was for public consumption, right? So for an internal document, this is fantastic. It gives everyone that cheat sheet. But we think that this can be repurposed as a way for our public, you know, our, our parents to see the same information may, may benefit from some design. That's, that was the, the.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, this is from the operation. We're looking for a vote on the 28th to approve budget transfers. As you can see, this is a statue from Wisconsin. It just needs to obtain two thirds vote. The school board for changes in spinning between different functions from what was originally presented in the certified budget in October. And it gives an example there that Angie laid out. For comparison purposes, last year budget transfers were about four, around $4 million. So it's a simple action that's needed for transferring of monies.
So it's a fairly routine.
Exactly.
Thing and we do this most, I think probably every year this, we, we end up doing this.
Next. Next is strictly informational, all the board and my staff, they have superintendent's 90 day plan. This strictly informational on that one. So you can see, I, I looked in this today and about 98% of the items I've already completed. Already. So this is strictly informational. And that concludes the superintendent report. Thank you, board.
All right. We're going to move on to policy and governance. First is Melissa is going to come and answer any questions you might have about the, the three policies and rules that are up for consideration.
No one saw that. I tried to get Dr. Tiller to include this in his report, but for some reason he thought he had enough. Okay. First is policy 383 live animals in the school. With the adoption of the policy regarding curriculum dogs in classrooms, we needed to provide a little bit of a clarity, a clarity with respect to this policy, live animals in school, which is really for those one-time animals that come in for a demonstration. Or as we probably all remember back in elementary school and maybe middle school, those classroom pets that our parents were so excited for us to bring home over the Christmas break to take care of them while, while school wasn't in session. So we provided some clarity, some feedback that we got from principals as well as teachers with respect to how things are currently going with those animals in classrooms. Feedback from.
Feedback from facilities as well as to where we can improve things when we have animals in classrooms with respect to cleanliness and responsibility. I did receive some feedback from Lynn on uh organization for the policy, so we can make those changes and then um bring those back. For the meeting on the twenty-eighth as well. Okay. Go ahead, Laura.
Very thorough. Thank you. And I was also, what it, do you know how to pronounce the the word, the the kind of birds, P S I T T A C I N E? I know that wasn't part of the requirements, but I'm like, how do you even say that? Or. Citizen? Okay. But it's it's definitions number nine. I was not prepared for that question.
Okay, Andrew.
Um this is a pretty. Comprehensive list of of banned um animals. Is this going to remove a, I guess. I'm I'm a little, I think there's, there's safety and then there's also, you know, using gloves to handle a a small. Reptile or something or like, is this going to just wipe out a lot of what I guess learning opportunities?
These are currently banned in our existing rule, so there's there's nothing new in the animals that are being banned. We're just folding the rule into the policy so that it's together.
Oh, it's only, okay, it's it's redlined because it exists elsewhere, but it's coming into here. Okay.
Correct. I think we can move on. Okay. Hey, we're bringing forward revisions to policy five twenty-six personnel records. Um we recently revised this policy, but we were audited by the FBI with respect to our criminal history record information. Particularly with respect to fingerprints. And unlike other school districts in the state of Wisconsin, because we have federal programs such as the Head Start program, we have to uh fingerprint individuals. So we needed to tighten things up a little bit with respect to our policy so that we are compliant with the FBI's requirements. Anybody? Okay. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, um that completes our agenda for the night. Um I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Um all in favor?
I.
I. Oh, God, I'm so sorry. Oh. I'm I'm so, so sorry. I'm not, we're not, we're doing it backward tonight, so I'm thinking we're all get to go home now, except that we don't. So I'm sorry, would someone please read the motion to go into closed session? So sorry. Go ahead, Lynn.
You know, this one is my specialty, right? I would put on my glasses for it. I move that the board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five, section one E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining error. Reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, negotiation strategy for collective bargaining agreements between the district and collective bargaining units. And Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, section one C. To consider employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over whom the board has jurisdiction. And Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five, one section F. To consider financial, medical, social or personal histories, which if discussed in public would likely. Would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of persons referred to specifically to discuss the employment status of an employee. And Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five, section one G. Conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation. In which it is or is likely to become involved to wit potential litigation regarding a former district employee.
Before we second that, I have to say that is the most amazingly efficient reading of that that I've ever heard at this table in the six-plus years. That I I feel, I I'm sorry, that was amazing. So I I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed. Okay, we're adjourned into closest session.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, W W W dot G B A P S dot org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five. Or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.